Welcome to the August 1st, 2017 Yukon City Council Meeting. In the council chambers here at Centennial Building at 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. We will begin by an invocation with Pastor Tim Bayer and followed by the flag salute. Mr. Bayer, or Pastor Bayer, I guess I should say.
Let us pray. Most holy and gracious God, we give you thanks for gathering us together tonight at tonight's city council meeting. We thank you for our elected officials and our city employees. We ask that you would guide tonight's decisions and deliberations and continue to bless the city and our leaders with foresight for the future and the current needs of our citizens. And we'd ask that you would bless our gathering and continue to help us be mindful of all of our blessings and how we might use those to bless others. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call call please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smysterla. Russell.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
The, this evening, we're going to have a special presentation tonight. I'm going to come down front. We have released, of course, to the press our, as many of you already know, our current fire chief has retired as of last Friday. We went through some extensive interviews with folks and we're very fortunate to find a couple of gentlemen who will come and serve us, so I'm going to come down and introduce them to you and have them also get a chance for you to see their families as well. So, Mr. Sean Vogt and Mr. Kyle Trumbly, would you come down in front, please? Yeah, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce you to Mr. Sean Vogt, our new fire chief. So would you give him a little round of applause, please? I also want to introduce to you Mr. Kyle Trumbly, our new assistant fire chief for the Yukon Fire Department. This represents a significant step forward for us in our structuring and everything else. We are very fortunate to have a wonderful fire department, to be very highly regarded by almost anyone I talk to, almost anywhere I go, "Oh, you're out in Yukon. I want to come out there and be in their fire department." So, it speaks very well of us. We want to continue that tradition. So, Mr. Vogt, do you have a few words?
Yeah, this is my wife Becky, my oldest daughter Morgan, other daughter Bailey, my son Gabe. And I just want to thank the city manager and the city council for giving me this opportunity and I look forward to moving forward.
Yeah, start from excited. Trumbly.
Kyle Trumbly, honored to be here. Thank you Tammy, Jim, city council. This is my wife Renee, my daughter Ella, and my son Owen. And I look forward to serving alongside Chief Vogt and these gentlemen back here, which is the main reason why we're here deciding to do this. Thank you.
All right, let's give them all a big round of applause. And thank both of you for being willing to serve. I think Jenna wants to see you over here. Do we have any other presentations or proclamations?
No, sir.
Jim, Jim. Moving along, the next item is visitors, where any visitor may come and address the council on a non-agended item. And they, did we have anyone who signed up this evening?
No, nothing returned.
Are there any visitors who wish to do so? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we will now recess as the Yukon City Council and we will reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all of the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 18th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the regular approval of all the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 18th, 2017; Payment of, item B: payment of material claims in the amount of $634,194.24; Item C: designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; And item D: setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August the 15th, 2017, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards and commissions and city officials. Any reports this evening?
I'd like to mention, Mr. Mayor, that I guess it's a good thing and bad thing, but last Sunday, our ambulance service made, I believe, it was 22 runs, which is a record for the community in one day, and did an excellent job in maintaining their five to six minute run time, and we sure appreciated the service that they're giving us at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Item number 3 is a performer presentation, performator presentation by Frank Crawford, Crawford and Associates PC, and this is an informational item only. Mr. Crawford, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for making some time to talk accounting. I know it's usually not the most exciting topic in the world, so I'll try to be brief. A month or so ago, you may remember that you were presented your annual audit results for fiscal year 2016 by Lonny Heim, who basically told you that you received what's called a clean opinion, or the fact that the numbers in the financial statements are correct. What he didn't spend a lot of time talking about was the 99 pages of numbers and what they actually mean. If you recall, I mentioned that I would come back to you and try to take those 99 pages and condense them down into something that's a bit more relevant. What you have in front of you is what we call our performator report. It simply is a pretty understandable concept where we take the fiscal results of the city based on their audit reports and we transform those into, very simply, on a scale of 0 to 10, how well are we doing? With 10 representing excellent financial health and success, a 0 representing poor financial health and success, and a 5 representing what we would consider average or satisfactory financial health and success. Page 5 of the performator, which is about 20, 25 to 30 pages long, what this basically does is it looks at about 18 financial statement ratios that we consider very important to the state and local government arena, scores those 18 ratios and weights them, and then produces this overall score that you see on page 5. The easiest way to read the performator, it depends on which side appeals to you. Some people are pictures people, which they like the graphs and charts on the left, other people are into narratives which are on the right, and then other people prefer a little speedometer with red, yellow, and green up there in the right corner. And as you can see on page 5, the overall summary of your score is that at June 30, 2016, you scored about a 5.9 on the scale of 0 to 10, a little bit above satisfactory, and an improvement from where you were in 2015, which is a 4.8. What the scale doesn't show you is that if you go back to 2011, we had a pretty visual stair stepping down from a high of 6.5 down to a low of 4.8 at the end of 15. And if we would have measured the financial health and success of the city in, say, February of 2016 instead of June of 16, you probably would have scored in somewhere in the 3's. It was about February, I think, when we came to you at your request to look at how things were in February, and I believe at that point in time, that was probably the worst point that we had, financial health and success wise. A number of corrective actions were taken over the next several months, cutbacks, revenue enhancements, new administration, and you basically had a remarkable turnaround in that last four or five months there in 2016. A turnaround, from what I said, would have been in the 3's, but now has scored about a 5.9. So, that's your overall score. Obviously, there's room for our fiscal health and success to continue to grow. Over the next 18 pages or 20 pages, there are different ratios. I'm going to pick out just a couple and point your attention to them, and then we'll talk about any questions that you may have. The first ratio I want you to look at is on page 8. It's called the level of general fund unassigned fund balance. Basically, what this looks at is what does the general fund, which is our primary operating fund, what does it have left over at the end of the year, kind of in a rainy day capacity? We call it unassigned fund balance. Typically, you call it carry forward or reserves. We have about 8% of our total annual revenue stream in a reserve capacity, and that's not including the general fund reserve, which is restricted, which is about $650,000 additional dollars on top of the 1.9 million that you see here. But from a unrestricted, unassigned carryover standpoint, we are at about 8%. The general rule of thumb for state and local governments put forth by what we call the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that at a minimum, your general fund unassigned fund balance ought to be about 10% of your annual general fund revenues. So, that's at a minimum. So, we're a little bit less than the minimum. That's why you kind of see the score in the yellow area on the speedometer. But again, 10% is typically what we see as a desired minimum fund balance. So, we're a little bit less than that, and as you can go back and look in time, there were points, especially at the end of 14, where that number was actually negative. In other words, we had no rainy day funds and actually were in a bit of a deficit as far as the general fund's unassigned fund balance was concerned. Another slide I'll draw your attention to is slide 10, where it looks at the health of the non-uniformed employee pension plan. Since our fire and police are covered by a state plan, our non-uniformed employees are covered by a separate plan, and that plan is hovering right around 81% funded right now. 80% is okay as far as industry's standards are concerned, but until it's 100% funded, I'm not very comfortable with it, so I don't score you very well, even though on average, you would probably be considered satisfactory at an 80%. I would like to see you get up into 90, 95%, and ultimately fully fund that pension system. And as long as you continue to make 100% of your required contributions into the fund and the investment returns match their desired level, which is about 7.5%, that fund will fund itself over a period of time. So, it's not in any jeopardy right now. I just wanted to call your attention to it in that it is not fully funded, and it has not ever been fully funded, at least in the history of the plan that I've seen. But it is at its highest funding level that it has been at over the five or six years that we have looked at it. Another slide I think I may mention is slide 12, where we're looking at what we call the current ratio. The simple way to look at that is, how does cash flow look? And at June 30 of 2016, our cash flows were not really very good. Ideally, we would like to have $2 of current assets for every $1 of current liabilities that we have, and at June 30, we only had 90 cents of current assets for every $1 of current liabilities, which probably produced a little bit of cash flow problems in that we would have to wait for other revenues to come in, other cash to come in, in order to pay vendors and employees. So, that ratio is probably as low as it's been in the, in the five or six years that we have looked at it. I would imagine that hopefully at the end of 17, that ratio is somewhat recovered.
Do you suspect that is true?
Yes, from all indications that I've seen, I think 17's going to have a little bit of recovery cash flow wise. I think overall, the score for 17 might not change dramatically one way or the other, but I think it, I think it will inch up based on what I've seen. I just don't think we're going to see dramatic leaps up or down. I think we're going to have to structure our, the same way we're structuring the rebuilding of our finances, is do it over a period of time. But I imagine that 17 is not going to set us back any, and rather inch us up a little bit. Maybe one or two other ratios that I think I'll point to. Slide 18, where we look at what we call our business type activity self-sufficiency. We operate a utility system, and we get to charge rates and fees that are designed to pay for that activity. It's like running a business. And so what we like to see is that we at least charge $1 in revenue for every $1 of utility expense that we incur. And you can kind of notice that over this chart, we were on a downward trend up until about 2013, where we had recovered a little bit, but it was just barely paying for itself. In other words, we were only charging almost a dollar for every $1 that was going out and not generating any surplus or any other monies for reimbursement of other expenses. I think sometime in late 16, in the spring of 16, you adjusted some utility rates. You would have seen the results of that adjustment come through. That's why I think you now see the utility system generating now at that 123% as opposed to less than 100% where it had historically been in the few years before that. The last slide I'll talk about and then answer any questions you have is slide 20, which talks about sales tax. You are one of the fortunate Oklahoma municipalities that have seen a five to six year trend of increasing sales tax. And so, this chart basically looks at sales tax increases or decreases since 2011. As you can see, you've probably averaged anywhere from 4 to 6% increases in sales tax each year. So hopefully, that trend will continue because sales tax is a very significant driver outside of utilities. It's the primary source of revenue. It's actually the source of revenue for the general fund and city operations, where utilities is the revenue function of the, of the utility authority or public works authority. So, sales tax is a big driver and a big key. So the rest of this is just some historical data that you can kind of look at, and much easier to read, I think, than the 99 pages of an audit report with numbers going every which way. This is pretty simple, pretty, pretty non-complicated in that everybody seems to understand on a scale of 1 to 10, how are we doing? And that's kind of how this model is based. So hopefully, that may answer some of your questions, but I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Sure, I have questions.
Sure.
First of all, maybe Jim, can we make this available online so the public can view this?
Sure. We can make that online.
Okay, and then, secondly, if they would rather come down and pick up a copy, are those available? Would there be an expense associated with that?
Well, I think it would depend on the demand. We can make it available, but I mean, if we start running hundreds of copies, which I doubt we will, but from the short term, if anybody wants to look at it, we can make sure they get a copy.
Okay. So it'd be available online within the next day or two?
Yes.
And then, available for someone to pick up and look at at City Hall starting tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay. Frank, just a little bit of information about the report, so whenever they look at it. First of all, can you explain the rating analysis? Is it, is it numbers versus, is this just your opinion of where we are? Is that how you came up with this?
Basically, what we ended up doing when we created this model 18 years ago was to basically try to set benchmarks for where either the industry sets goals and objectives for state and local government, such as the GFOA, creating a minimum fund balance of the general fund that they think is acceptable or satisfactory. We sat down, did a lot of research about where we think cities and towns and municipal governments ought to be as far as benchmarking. In other words, where every ratio should be in order to score a 10, where everybody should be to score a 5, and where everybody should be to score a 0. That research was based on where city governments actually are, where the industry believes they should be, and, and basically, our opinion of what makes fiscal health and fiscal performance. So, we copyrighted and trademarked this model back in 1999, and did it basically for our own use, for us to be able to come to city councils and say, on a scale of 1 to 10, you're a 6, or a 8, or a 1. What we didn't realize was that it would get picked up both nationally and internationally, and now is kind of a common used financial health and analysis model globally. 11 international governments use it, along with hundreds of governments within the United States, and it's actually taught now in, in college and university textbooks. So, it is our model, it is our opinion, but it seems to have wide acceptance, both nationally and internationally.
So, is it an industry standard that's used?
Well, our model uses several industry standards and pieces them all together, but I would, I would probably consider our model a relative industry standard in and of itself.
Okay. Can you give us some examples of maybe some cities around us and how they perform, so whenever?
Sure.
I want to make that a compound question, so you can answer it all together. So, give us some examples of cities, and then it goes from 1 to 10. I mean, what gets you a 1, and has there ever been a 10? Talk to us about.
Sure.
How the scale works.
You know, typically, although we refer to the scale as a scale of 1 to 10, it's actually 0 to 10. They're typically, you're not going to see government score a 0, you're not going to see a government score a 10. It's almost impossible to go from a 0 to a 10. You're going to see something in between the two. Communities that are in and around you or similar to you, I pulled a couple of their reports just to give you some comparatives. Remember, you're scoring at a 5.9 at the end of June of 16. For example, El Reno scored a 7.4, Edmond scored a 7.4, Nichols Hills scored a 7.3, and actually, the highest scorer that we've seen is in the, in the town of Piedmont, which is very far from here, which scored an 8.6, and historically have scored the upper sevens or the lower eights for a number of years that we've been measuring this in Piedmont. Now, to give you an example of the flip side of that, Puerto Rico, the national government of Puerto Rico, which is a territory of the United States, scored a 1.5 on this model, and that was for fiscal 15, which is the most recent financial statements that they've been able to release. I know things have gotten worse in the territory of Puerto Rico since then, so I can only imagine that the 1.5 is less, and maybe testing my theory of there'll never be a 0, because if there's going to be one, it's going to be them. But I still don't think it'll ever get to that point. So, most of the governments that we deal with around here usually score in the 6 to 7 range, and there are some outliers in the eights, but not many, and then there are some that are obviously less than fives also. So, a 5.9 is, is considering where you could have been at the end of 16, based on what had transpired for the first six to seven months of 16. 5.9 is actually great, because you were headed to the 3's after that first five or six months.
Regarding our pension, you said that the city is making 100% contribution. So, who determines what the contribution is, and how do you know that we're making 100% contribution?
Every year, the OMRF, the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, who is the administrator of the non-uniform pension system, they contract with an accountant that loves numbers, they're called actuaries, and the actuaries run a stunning amount of statistics on numbers based on employment data that comes from the city, and basically looks at gender, ages, estimated times of retirement, length of employment, and they literally predict how much money needs to be there in retirement for each of those employees, and then basically divides those formulas by how much the city needs to contribute every year in order to fully fund that estimated expense. And so, every year, a report comes to you from OMRF that says, "Our actuary has determined that your rate needs to be 7% of payroll," or 9% of payroll, or in other words, whatever somebody makes, 9% of that, we need to match and put into that system. That number changes every year. It could be 7%, 9%, 11%, 13%. Unlike the state's fire and police plans, which remain relatively constant at 13 and 14%, yours usually fluctuates every year based on what the actuarial data shows from the actuary. So, when the letter comes to you, basically in March of every year, the city manager will then look at that letter and say, "Okay, it says 11% of payroll needs to be contributed." Math will be done, we'll figure out what 11% of the payroll is, and that becomes the budget for the next year of what your matching contributions are to the plan. And so, as long as you make that required contribution, then all we have to do is watch the plans and investments grow at the rate that they are estimated to grow, and that plan will then fully fund itself typically.
Okay. Then help the council and the public understand, if we're making 100% contribution, why it's not 100% funded.
Yeah, over time, in your case, let's say that the OMRF estimates that they're going to make 7.5 or 8% on the investment portfolio of the lifetime career of a municipal employee. That may be a 25-year period of time, and so although they may average, claim to average 7.5%, they probably aren't at 7.5% yet, and therefore, the plan's not fully funded. However, as long as they are close to that 7.5% and you continue to make 100% of your contributions, it can't not work. In other words, it has to work. Otherwise, we would be lowering the investment rate of return to 6%, and then the city or the employee might be required to contribute more. But at the end of the day, the plan needs X amount of money in order to fully fund itself, and right now, X isn't going in there. The city's doing its part, but the investment returns are not there just yet.
Okay. On page 12, when we look at from 13 to 15 or 16, can you, so in 2013, this is the current ratio.
Sure.
On our ability to be able to pay the employees and the vendors, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So in 2013, it was 4.73, and now it's 0.9.
90 cents.
.9.
Yeah.
So, it kind of stair steps down over time. What happened? Do you have a theory? Do you have some information that would answer that for the council?
Yeah, it's pretty, this one's a pretty simple deal. We spent more money than we earned in those years. So, at the end of 13, where we had $4.73 for every $1 of liabilities that we owed, well, next year, we might have spent $2 for every $1.50 that we collected, and then the difference had to be made up with this cash. And so typically, when your current ratio declines from 4.73 to 90 cents, what that's indicative of is the city spending out more cash than it is collecting.
And that was the budget that was doing that?
That was pretty much designed that way. well, next year, we might have spent two dollars for every dollar fifty that we collected, and then the difference had to be made up with this cash. And so, typically, when your current ratio declines from four point seven three to ninety cents, what that's indicative of is the city spending out more cash than it is collecting.
And that was the budget that was doing that?
That was pretty much designed that way in the budget. Your, your budgets for those years were designed to spend, at least from what I can tell, they were designed to spend more money than they were collecting, and to use up those surpluses. It just, they got used, I think, much quicker than what was anticipated, and that's what the decline led to the ninety cents.
So, and you've seen our budget, the current budget, and has that situation been corrected?
Your, your budget is what I would consider a zero, a zero-based budget now. In other words, it's balanced in the fact that we are only going to appropriate what we're going to collect. So, rather than spending two dollars and earning only a dollar and a half, if we earn a dollar and a half, we're only going to appropriate a dollar and a half. So, therefore, it, it typically doesn't get any worse, only gets better from that point. Because typically, we will collect a little more revenue than what we estimate, and we usually spend a little less than what we appropriate. So, that number will kick back up, much like what we see it now, stair stepping down. I would imagine you'll see it stair step back up.
So, based upon your experience and the information that you've received, I guess, from the ninety pages, are you satisfied with the budget that exists for the city? Would you recommend that we make more changes, or?
I, I think, I think the way you're budgeting now with, with what I call a balanced budget, in that we don't appropriate any more than what we collect in revenue, I think you're going to have to experience that for a couple of years and see what the results are before you decide to make drastic changes, one way or the other. What had happened over the past several years was the city had simply appropriated more money than it was going to collect, using its reserves or its savings to make up the difference, until there simply wasn't any more savings. And at that point, we had already got accustomed to a level of service, of expenditures at a certain level, and it becomes very difficult to cut those expenditures back after the public gets used to that level of service. I would probably want to see a couple of years of, of the budget the way it is now, where we're appropriating and, and earning the same amount, and then see how that impacts the ratios, before I can determine whether or not there's still a structural deficit at, at play. I don't think there is, but I'd like to see a couple of years of results.
Okay. Last topic, I won't let you, believe it's the last question, so I'll probably have a follow-up or two, but page eighteen.
Okay.
So, when we look at the number where it says, for instance, this year, for two thousand and sixteen, one hundred and twenty-three percent, what profit margin is in that number? That's not a hundred and twenty-three percent profit.
No, what that means is, is that for every dollar that we pay out in utility expense, we are now earning a dollar twenty-three in revenue. So, that twenty-three percent, though, does not include how much money we have to subsidize over for the general fund, or how much we reimburse the general fund. That's just a straight utility dollar revenue versus utility dollar expense. So, if you look at the previous years, in fact, if you look at two thousand and thirteen, what, what that would tell you in two thousand and thirteen, that ninety-one percent would basically say that in two thousand and thirteen, for every one dollar that you incurred in utility operational expense, you only earned ninety-one cents, which usually has something to do with your rate structure being inefficient.
So, the city was supplementing the utilities at nine percent at that time?
Absolutely. It was either eating up its reserves, or it was transferring money from other funds into that utility fund to subsidize it. But that's the only year that it was under. The other two years, thirteen and fourteen, were barely close enough to break even, I guess you would say, without reimbursing the general fund for any expense on its own. Now, because of your rate adjustments, you're factoring in the expense of those reimbursements, so that's why you see that dollar twenty-three now, as opposed to a dollar.
And with your experience, do you have the ability to compare that with some other cities? Is that a, is that a typical margin? Is that high? Is that low? Do other cities make a profit from their utilities?
You know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to measure every city, because some city governments are very different. You know, some have larger parks and rec departments and, and other, other programs that certain cities don't have. But typically, I would say it's extremely common for the utility system to subsidize general fund operations, because the general fund gets most of its money from sales tax, but the expenses that we have in the general fund, fire, police, streets, admin, finance, everything, they have seemed to have grown faster than the sales tax revenue has grown. So, a lot of governments have subsidized from their utility system over to the general fund. So, usually, this utility system, if it's designed, like most state and local governments, there's a cushion for the amount of reimbursement or subsidy that has to go to the town. So, this is relatively common. I, I don't think it's out of, out of range or anything of what's normal.
Would you ever recommend that we subsidize the utility?
Well, you know, it's, it's kind of a choice that many governments make. Some governments want to artificially keep their utility rates low by subsidizing sales tax over to the utility. Other governments basically say, "Look, we'd like to keep our sales tax rate low, so we're going to subsidize the general fund from the utility." So, they raise their rates and fees. It's, it's typically a choice. At the end of the day, X amount is needed to operate both functions, and since you're in control of both functions, it just becomes a, a choice of your own. But I would say it's far more common for the utilities to subsidize the general operations than for general to subsidize the utilities.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Explain that. Governments operate everything different. We have always had a public works department we've had to subsidize. But they fix the, for example, water line breaks at the well field, things of that nature, that we go out and repair. We have to have money to cover that. That does not come out of this, it comes out of this money, but it's not, it's in the general fund. It's not in the water and utility department. So, it subsidizes public works. An item you'll have next week is an item in sanitation, for example, that's a part of our utilities, and it, it's for eighty-seven, or eighty, eighty-something thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, because our skid steer there has broken. We've got to get something else to get in there in order to operate the transfer station. So, when it looks like it's, it's a hundred and twenty-three percent, it's really not a profit at a hundred and twenty. The money comes out, but it's also paying to subsidize some of these other areas and take care of those expenses that are really part of our utilities.
Okay, then, let me ask you a question.
Pretty complicated when you get to it.
It is, and I'm probably going to make it worse.
All right.
So, the one hundred and twenty-three percent, is the, the twenty-three percent over and above just the cost of the utility itself? It doesn't include the maintenance and et cetera?
It doesn't include a lot of the maintenance that's in public.
It probably doesn't include a lot of the capital purchases that might have to occur.
Things of that nature.
So, it's just the profit?
Just operational.
Okay. This is water, isn't it?
It's water, sewer, sanitation. It's all utilities together. Okay. Any other questions?
No. Mr. Russell?
He's pretty good.
Hit them all there.
Okay, I, I just, I'll be pretty brief with this.
Sure.
We had spoken a couple of years ago about the current state of our pension programs, and I think you're indicating to me at this, the numbers that I've read and the discussion that we had, that the pensions certainly are back to being in, in good shape, and that we are funding them correctly, and that, you know, assuming that, you know, OK, MRF and all the rest of that stuff comes through, their long-term actual, actuarial numbers, that we'll not see any difficulties there in the future.
That's correct.
And I guess another thing is, is that we've also gone back to where we've, you know, revitalized our rainy day fund and other things. We have not been purchasing any out of that, and it's come back pretty substantially, and I've had folks ask me about where we stand on that. And I've indicated to them, I said, it was the number two point five million roughly, and the one point nine plus the six hundred thousand that we indicated earlier today. You know, a sales tax, sales tax is kind of a fickle, you know, a fickle thing here, and so, we can't always depend on it, but we've done, I think, pretty well in the sales tax department compared to other communities. You know, the folks that I talk to outside our community, we've seemed to, when we talk three or four percent, we're doing pretty well here, and a lot of them are not seeing those same kind of numbers, so.
I agree.
We are, we are blessed with that. But I'll just give you a, a real quick question is, what's your? I know your current evaluation is that we're at five point nine, or we're almost six percent. We were at six point four, apparently, at one point in time, according to your performer. Do you see that number coming back fairly quickly, and what's your just current appraisal of where we are?
You know, I think it's probably going to, I think it's probably going to return, maybe to levels that are even above where the six point five were, just based on typically how Jim kind of administers the cities that he's been at, that's typically been the trend. I, I think your, your five point nine, the, the five point nine for that year, if you'd have asked me where you were going to end up in February or March, I would have told you, you wouldn't be close to a five point nine. I, I thought you were really going to end up in the threes. But there's been a remarkable recovery, and I don't see anything that, that says that that recovery's not going to continue. But I think it's much like your, your reserves, you're not going to be able to fix all this in one year. You're going to have to kind of stair step your way back up into the fiscal health model, much like you stair stepped downward. It just won't all happen in one year.
Well, Mr. Hyman indicated, when we asked, when I questioned him on a lot of that, he was saying it would be at least a three-year window. Do you concur with that, or?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would hope that we would see a little bit of, of kick up in the score this year, but again, it's, you know, one natural disaster, one unanticipated expenditure, you know, one economic disaster really has an impact on this. So, you got to kind of, holding everything constant, I think we're going to see inches up in the score. But again, everything doesn't usually get held constant.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the council, I think you'll see, what Mr. Crawford talked about, our reserves have increased tremendously compared to what we were, we're down to zero. I think you, you talked about cash, the actual cash flow of the city, I think you'll see an increase. But when you go through the performer and you look at it, and you look at sales tax, average four point five increase and what have you, but last year, it was pretty flat. So, that's going to hurt us, because you didn't get a four point five increase in sales tax. So, when you put all these indicators together, we had to make up for that in the budget by cutting back and doing some things. So, that, there are several factors in there that'll hurt you, and I think overall, cash flow, cash reserves, money with all of our accounts, yes, we were down to zero, if you remember, and we, we've come a long way, but we've still got a ways to go, and we talked about three years, and I, I told you it'd take three to five years to fully recover, I think, in all of our accounts, to get our reserves back to where I think we need to be, because as your general fund grows and expenses grow, that reserve account grows too, to be twenty-five percent of that. So, we have some areas to make up and go from there. But we're going to make it.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Crawford? Mr. Crawford, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate your time and efforts, and the, certainly, the insights that you've given to me over the time, and the council as well, I'm sure. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item number four, consider authorizing an expenditure of funds not to exceed eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents for the purchase of a Caterpillar front-end loader from Warren Cat for the sanitation department, state contract SW one nine two, as recommended by the public works director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Discussion? Uh, this is a, we're, Arnold is here. Arnold, you want to comment on this, just?
This is the item we, we talked about on the skid steer, replacing it.
So, this is the skid steer?
This is, this is the replacement of that skid steer. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Arnold.
The skid steer that we're replacing was purchased in late two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. The expenses on this piece of equipment is getting, well, the track, it's, it's not movable right now. We're spending about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, and the machine is a little bit too small. We're getting purchased a little bit bigger piece of equipment, and we anticipate that this machine will last eight to ten years.
Okay, and we purchased this on the state contract, or did we bid it, or what?
We took four quotes, but that is off the state contract price, the SW one ninety-two.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item five, consider approving and authorizing an expenditure of funds not to exceed thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents for the annual Cisco maintenance agreement for hardware, software, infrastructure to be paid to Presidio Network Solutions. This is state contract number ITS W one zero zero six, C three one seven zero, as recommended by the information technology director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item six, consider approving change order number one to the city of Yukon Public Works Department Maintenance Facility Project and Yukon Community Support Foundation Storage Facility to increase the thickness of the concrete floor slab of the Community Support Foundation Storage Facility in the amount not to exceed six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents, as recommended by the city engineer. Robbie, do you have any comments on that, or just?
No, it was just decided, the storage building was meant to just be for light storage, and then, after visiting with the city manager, we wanted to increase the floor slab thickness from five to seven inches, should in the future, the city would want to put larger equipment in there, so.
So, we could use it for other purposes, is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other discussion?
We don't have a motion.
We don't, do I, do we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item number seven, consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and convene into an executive session for confidential communications with the representatives of McAfee and Taft concerning pending and potential litigation regarding certain individuals and businesses, as provided for in twenty-five OS two zero zero three, section three oh seven B four. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No? Vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll adjourn.
We need to invite, we need to invite.
Yeah. It's like for Tammy Spain to join us?
And the attorneys, of course.
And all of the attorneys.
Yeah.
Yucky ducky. There's everyone. Where are my suit? We are all back.
After you, after you take the vote.
Okay.
Number eight is for your.
Okay. Number, item number eight, consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No action was taken, and no votes were cast. Item nine is new business, and do we have any new business?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would like to take just a short moment or so to let everybody know the Yukon August events. We've got quite a few. Thursday, October the third, concert in the parks are going to be with Maddox Ross and Champ Devere, rocking country music. There'll be free pony rides, train rides, chism. There'll be free pony rides, train rides, Chisholm Trail, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, free bandanas for the first hundred kids. While they last, there'll be food trucks and a lot of activities. The movie in the park will be True Grit, and it begins at dusk. On Friday, October the fourth, they will have a wet and wild party at City Splash Swimming Pool at ten A M. A big, good time for the kids. Activities include swimming and diving for coins, contests, that sort of thing. On Saturday, August the twenty-sixth, Spirit Sprint and Family Festival from nine to eleven A M. They're going to have a five K run. Nine A M., they're going to have three separate walk categories, and for folks that have their dogs, that want to bring them to walk, and a family walk where the whole family can come together, and, and on the lease to say, the stroller mamas, they're going to be out there as well. So, live band at ten A M., Crimson Faith, train rides, water play, mood bounce, and things for the kids. On Thursday, October the thirty-first, Rock the Route, Main Street Downtown, was a pretty substantial group last year, and six to eleven P M., live entertainment, Randy Rogers Band, special guest Reckless Kelly, and family fun, food booth, things for the kids. Should be a, I don't know, how many did we have last year? Do you remember?
About seven thousand.
About seven thousand folks showed up, so come out on August thirty-first for a really good time. And on Monday, September the fourth, the Labor Day Replay. We had a very unfortunate weather event during our Fourth of July holiday, and at that time, Mr. Irv Wagner's band kind of got rained out, and he has agreed to come back, and we had, going to have some fireworks as well, so Irv Wagner's band are going to come out, and they're going to play at eight o'clock, and then around nine thirty, as soon as it gets really good and dark, we're going to go ahead and have the really nice fireworks show that we missed on the third. So, with that, no other new business that we have, we go to council discussion. Ms. Donna?
Well, I was unable to attend Chief Jones' retirement reception, and I just wanted to thank him for his many years of service to our city, and then also congratulate the new chief, Vote, and assistant chief, Trumbly. Thank you.
Richard?
I'd also like to just thank the new chief and assistant chief, and welcome them to the city, and thank Mr. Jones for his service also. That's all.
I had the same. I was having to be out of town fishing with my son in the Gulf of Mexico, but I certainly want Kevin to know how much I appreciate all his hard work and all of what he did, and the attitude that he instilled in the work ethic. He left a great legacy for the new chief and assistant chief to inherit and continue to work with, and I welcome both of them and look forward to working with them. And then I wanted to say, this afternoon, we did the ribbon cutting at the Ranchwood restroom, and I just thought that was a wonderful example of several organizations and group and different forms of money that have come together over the last several years to take basically kind of a field with a bunch of rocks in it that little kids chased a soccer ball around while the dust blew in their eyes just several years ago, and now it's, it's a nice plush green soccer field, and if you want to see, you know, six, seven hundred kids this fall, you know, go out there on a Saturday or a Sunday, and you'll see a great event. So, thank you to everyone who's worked diligently to get rid of the tennis courts, build the restroom, plant grass, et cetera. Thank you very much.
And I'd also like to congratulate Chief Jones. I was there at, at the presentation. We gave him a proclamation and proclaimed that Friday is Kevin Jones' day. It was really a nice opportunity for me to meet his family, and not only his family that he lives with every day, but his family at the fire department. We had a wonderful group of people that showed up to wish him well. We now have two excellent candidates that you all met earlier tonight and their families, and hopefully, we will continue our move forward. So, once again, thank you very much to Kevin and all of his time that he has given to us, and hopefully, moving forward, Mr. Vote and Mr. Trumbly will also put us in that same mode of, of moving forward. And I also went over, and I really appreciate the Ranchwood facilities that have been not only the removal of the old tennis courts and all of the old facilities that should have been removed a long time ago, and they've turned, once again, a dirt field into a wonderful place. And I certainly appreciate it very much, especially since it's in my ward. So, I just wanted everybody to know that, that it's a, it's a, it's a good step forward in making our community a great place to live. So, with that, with no other comments or things before the council, I am going to adjourn, but also let everybody know we are having a special study in discussing Spanish Cove, and that will begin in just a few minutes, as soon as we get organized, and we'll meet back in the council room afterward. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned.